She's got herself muted. So, good evening. My name is Adam Burney. I'm the land use director for the town of Lunenburg. And as a preliminary matter, I just want to confirm that all the members are present and able to be heard. So please, when I call your name, just say that you're present. Matthew Allison.
Present.
Paula Bertram.
Present.
Tanner Cole.
Present.
And in accordance with the remote, well, the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread to all town facilities. I'm sorry, prevent the spread and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all meetings are being conducted remotely. The order which can be, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by Zoom conference, telephone video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. So the meeting will get turned over to the planning board chair. We'll start with the initial items on the agenda. Please use the raise hand function if you wish to be called on. And if, and please state your name and residential address if you're a Lunenburg resident or your affiliation if you are representing a resident prior to making your comment. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Matt.
Great. Well, as Adam said, welcome to planning board meeting. We're going to forego the pledge of allegiance since we're finding it difficult to do online. The order has been made. We've got three members present. First off, is there any public comment not related to an agenda item tonight?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, very good. Is there any board comment? Okay, we'll get right into it then. We have A and R plans. We have two of them. First one is 71 Wildwood Road. And.
Frank, that's you, I believe.
There we go. Is he muted?
Yep.
Can you hear me now? Yep, yep.
Yeah, terrific. Nice to speak with you all. This is Frank Preston of Whitman and Bingham Associates. And I represent Mr. Gerard Crotto of 55 Wildwood Road in the Hickory Hills neighborhood near the Townsline. And the purpose of the plan we submitted is to fix a misapprehension that the owners had about where the property line was between 55 and 71 Wildwood Road. 55 Wildwood Road thought he owned more land than he did. That was discovered last year when we surveyed 71 Wildwood Road and found that 59 Wildwood Road also encroached on that property. And you, the board will remember last year, we submitted an A and R to correct that problem. So now, the property behind number 55 is also seeking to remedy his misapprehension of the property line. So he has made an agreement with the butter at 71 Wildwood Road to purchase about seven tenths of an acre of land to bring his property more in line with what he thought he owned originally. And because this seven tenths of an acre leaves over eight acres of land with 71 and because the seven tenths of an acre doesn't really materially impact any of the improvements on 71, it seems like a win-win situation for both landowners. So it's a pretty simple situation and if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Right, very good. Thank you. And I will open it up to the board if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
No.
Okay, it looks pretty straightforward. Did we get, did we get feedback from Board Health making sure that there's no well or septic impacted?
We did. There was, there was no comments that indicated any impact.
All right. Well, I don't see any issues and having no questions from the members, I would take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the A and R plan for 71 Wildwood Road as submitted.
Second.
Second? Yep, very good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bertram.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you.
Adam, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. Adam, what arrangement should I make to pick up the mylar after it's signed?
Uh, I'll reach out to you when it's signed and let you, and we'll, we'll schedule something.
Terrific. Adam, thank you so much for making it easy for me. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Frank. Have a good night.
You as well. Good night, everybody.
Our next, our second A and R plan for tonight is for 46 Arbor Street. And is this going to be Ms. Quartermarsh?
I believe you have yourself, you have yourself.
Hi, I have submitted an A and R for the sale of property from 46 to 64 Arbor Street.
And the plan speaks for itself, pretty much?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Very good. That's all you've got to say about it?
Um, you all have all the paperwork. The survey has been completed. We're just waiting for your approval in order to send it over to the lawyers.
Okay, very good. I see that we've got comments from conservation but not Board of Health. I believe, are both properties on septic and well?
Both properties are on septic and have town water. And I do believe the Board of Health fits sign off on that.
Okay.
And it's rear property, so it's away from the area where those are located, is my recollection.
Yes, that's true.
All right. Does the, do board members have any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Yes, please.
On the, on the plan parcel A2, you mentioned that the, the septic is away from the property line. I don't see anything from Board of Health saying that they don't have any concerns. Do you have any idea on that plan where your septic system is for that property?
For 46 or 64?
Uh, I don't know. It's parcel A2. It looks like it has.
Or 40, 46.
Forty, the septic is as furthest away from 64 as you can get. It's on the other side.
The septic is behind her house, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess I'm confused. So are there homes on both of these parcels?
There are on both of these parcels. There's no exchange of any frontage or anything like that. This is, basically, it's a sale of farmland. Claire needs less, I want more. It's just backland.
Okay, okay. So the, the property that's considered parcel A2, which is the 8.775 acres, that's going to be transferred to the other property?
Correct.
Okay.
No, no. A1 is the transferred property. A2 is the remaining property with the house at 46.
Right, okay.
So 46 has frontage. It goes back, it jogs to the southeast. And now it comes all the way back over to that very skinny part of 64.
Can you, can you put the plan up and just explain what's happening? Because I'm.
I don't know. That's, let's test my technical capabilities.
I can do it.
I like, I like Matt, Matt's way.
There we go. There we go. So this is clear.
Unfortunately, Matt, I can't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's let Adam try it though. Maybe he can get better.
If you just click on the bottom on share screen and pull it up on your screen.
Yeah, I just have to find the, the document.
Okay. Matt, maybe if you just point to the general direction, you can clear it up.
I got it.
Oh, he's got it. Okay, never mind.
No, I'm just waiting for the dread machine to load it.
So basically, the majority, there's three parcels shown in this, on this plan.
Yeah.
With their full outlines. Existing, two of them fully surround the, the third one in the middle.
There we go. So follow here, see the hand?
Yeah.
Original lot line for 46 comes down, goes back, comes across, down, back, and shoots all the way back.
Okay.
And so the new property line will come down here and go straight back from the chicken coop. So this whole triangle-ish type thing here is coming over to 64 as, as additional farmland. So this will become an eight-plus acre lot. This will become much larger with this large field and wetland system back here.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? If nobody has any, then I would take a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the A and R plan for 46 Arbor Street.
Second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor, Ms., sorry, Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And I for myself. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will be in touch when we have a signed plan for you to pick up.
Excuse me?
I'll be in touch when we have a signed plan for you to pick up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We apologize for the delay as well.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have a public hearing. We need to open the public hearing for 190 Electric Ave Stormwater Permit.
That is correct.
Now, just a general question on procedure. Special permits, are they required for vote?
They are. This is not a special permit under 40A. It is a stormwater permit under the general bylaw.
Okay, so three.
So while it has special permit in the title, my understanding is three will do on this because it is a general bylaw.
Okay. And have the applicant been warned that there are only three members? So one dissenting?
No, I, I'm not sure that I have mentioned that to him. I know that, that when there were four members, they were willing and, and hopeful to go ahead. And, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Smith, but I expect that that's continuing to be the case.
Is it out of line to ask the applicant?
It is not.
Is, if, if they would be able to answer, are they on?
Yep, I'm here. Hi, this is Brandon Smith.
Hi.
Good evening. Yeah, yeah, I think I would like to continue, or I'm sorry, not continue, that's the wrong word. But I would like to, to proceed with the, the hearing.
Okay, good. Very good. So I, I can read it. Town Lunenburg Public Hearing, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 11th, 2020, 6:35 PM to hear and discuss a stormwater management permit under Chapter 204, Stormwater and Storm Sewers of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for a 2.4 parcel, wait a minute, 2.4 megawatt, ground-mounted solar energy facility at 190 Electric Avenue, MAP 077, Parcel 0014, Lunenburg, Mass. Applicant is Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., 55 Technology Drive, Suite 102 Lowell, Mass. Property owner is Lunenburg Solar LLC, 259 Turnpike Road, Suite 100, South Borough, Mass. Materials are available digitally on request by mailing mbodio@lunenburgonline.com. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through Local Access Cable on Facebook Live on Public Access Facebook Page, HTTPS, colon backslash back, forward slash, forward slash, www.facebook.com, Lunenburg Public Access Cable, 1574, 272, 709, 75305, forward slash. The following information is also provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. Do I need to continue this, Adam, or is this something that was covered? You're muted, Adam, sorry.
That was covered. You really just want to cover that they, that it was advertised and what the, the hearing is for.
I think I've covered that, haven't I?
That you have.
Excellent. All right. So then, I think that we are officially open this public hearing and we would like to hear from the applicant.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for having me virtually. So I'll, I guess I'll go over briefly the project as it pertains to stormwater. This is a, as I think all of you may remember, it's a solar facility that was permitted through the board earlier, or in early 2019. We received the approvals. It's gone through the Conservation Commission as well. Since then, we're now getting to the point where we're hoping to be able to pull a building permit shortly this year. So that's what spurred submitting this stormwater application. As far as stormwater goes, there have been no material changes to the plan since it was approved by the board. There were some slight changes, you know, in, in areas as we've done additional site discovery, just, you know, kind of tweaking acreages of trees to, to reflect what is more accurately out there and that type of thing. So it's affected the stormwater slightly, but really only to the extent of enlarging the stormwater basin that's out there by a few feet. I can share, would it be helpful for me to share the plans?
The members have the packets hopefully from last meeting, from last month. But, but it, I don't know, it might be helpful for anybody looking. Do we have, do we have public on this public hearing, Adam?
Muted again.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go ahead with no for now? And if anybody has a question or concern, then we can show it then.
That works. So yeah, as far as, like I said, no material changes since the approval. Graves Engineering has, has reviewed the project. I responded to their comments earlier today, so I don't know if, you know, I'd be happy to go through those comments and address the changes that I've made, plans based on those. But the, again, they were fairly, you know, they, Graves reviewed it during our original planning board submission. So you only minor changes.
I was going to say, I don't, in, in my current package, I don't see any comments from Graves.
They, he sent them over, I think it was Tuesday of last week's that the.
Oh, okay. Let me look in another place.
Wednesday. It was June 3rd is when he submitted his initial review responses.
I know, I know Marjorie emailed them out today. I don't know if they went out earlier than that.
I got an email about outside dining.
I'd be happy to just, there's, it's short enough that I could just go through.
It is up on the screen now.
Yeah, we could go through each comment and, you know, quickly address it if the board would like it. I think there's only like five or less.
And Paula has her hand raised.
Yes, Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a question about the sequence of events here. I've heard reference to the approval prior. Can you just highlight when the project was approved and, and the changes specifically in the stormwater management since that approval?
Yeah, definitely. Let me get to the exact approval date.
And actually, while you're looking at that, I do have another question. Under the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, can you tell me what stormwater techniques these are considered? Is it considered a vegetated buffer strip and an infiltration basin under the stormwater handbook? Or specifically, what are, what are these designs under the stormwater handbook?
So that one I could touch on while I'm pulling this up.
Okay.
It would be a dry detention basin is what it's referred to in the stormwater handbook. Sometimes it's, it's a traditional basin.
An infiltration basin?
It is not, no, not an infiltration BMP. It is purely a detaining the water and outletting it at, basically, it's attenuating the peak discharges of the site. So based on the type of development that a solar facility falls into, we don't, you know, we don't have like parking areas, vehicle, you know, oil contaminants. So we're not required to treat the water quality like a, you know, like a traditional development Walmart or Home Depot or something like that.
But my question is, under the stormwater handbook in volume two, what would this, what would this stormwater structure be, be considered?
A dry detention basin is.
Dry detention basin. Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
It was originally approved on March 4th of last year.
Okay.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
I, I think a dry detention basin is required to have, be dry within 72 hours of a storm event?
That is correct. Yep. So we modeled it using HydroCAD. And, you know, to model basically a hundred-year storm, for example, that would be the, the largest storm that we model. And that will basically model the amount of time that it takes to drain. And yes, that would, we would need to make sure that's less than 72 hours. So I can go, let me try. I'll share my screen and I'll go over the more specifics. Oh, I, it says I can't share my screen, so.
No, you can't.
That, I can, if you want to pull up like sheet C 4.0, I can go over the specifics. So the overall stormwater of the, the site, so I guess it's a few, we break it down into a few subcatchments. You can see there's a, just kind of going from the entrance, there's a culvert underneath the road that, there's been no change to that since it was initially designed. There's a stream, a culvert under the stream crossing there that also has not changed. There's no change to that. So that's, you know, same size pipes, everything like that. The, where, what has changed is that south, the basin to the south, the dry detention basin, the area flowing into that. So you can see there's a swale that runs to the north. And basically, that's to capture, you know, the calculated, the required amount of water to ensure that the discharge off the site matches the pre-development discharge. So that's kind of what the length of that, that determines the length of that swale to capture the amount that we want off of that slope. And the uphill of that, we've done, since we, since March, we've basically done a little bit more tree surveying and site discovery. And we've tweaked some of the areas of, of like wooded cover, which then impacts slightly the amount of water that we want to capture and the rate of discharge to match the pre-development flow. So that's really the only change. The basin is, I think it, it was, I can pull up the size, but it's, right now, it's 35 by 55, and it was slightly smaller than that before. But the general idea is the same, same pipe, same overflow. So it was, it was fairly small, small changes. And Graves reviewed both of those, you know, the initial submittal during our site plan review as well as this last one, and found them to be in order. Other than that, yeah, there really has not been any material changes related to stormwater on the, on the site.
Excellent. So Adam, if you could go back to that Graves Engineering review and, and get down to the actual comments? Because I think all that, yep.
Yeah, this is just the intro.
Great.
So Graves did have a concern regarding the amount of free board proposed?
Yep. Yeah, that's, I can jump to that comment or we can address that.
So just, we'll go through the whole letter.
Yep. That, it, it was, actually ended up just being a mistaken call out, but like, I'll address that. We can just start working through these. So the first one, existing land use, site must be stated on the plans. Added, we added call out basically stating that it's wooded, undeveloped on-site. So I think that's a fairly straightforward change. Number two, estimated high groundwater elevation in the area used for the detention basin must be shown on the plans. We did GeoTech on the site, so it's estimated in that area around four feet below the ground level. So again, this is not an infiltration basin, so for infiltration, we would need two feet, which, you know, still would be feasible, but two feet above groundwater. But again, this is just a detention basin. We're not infiltrating. There may be infiltration in real, in reality, but we didn't model that. We're not relying on it to, for the system to work. So I added that to sheet 4.0, which is where the details of that basin are, are shown. So I had that information. Number three, Section 2.4 of the SWIP. The sequence and estimated dates of construction activities need to be identified when construction of the detention basin and its upgraded swale will occur. Furthermore, the number of phases in the SWIP is inconsistent with the number of phases in the project sequencing document that was attached to Borrego's April 3rd correspondence. Section 2.4 of the SWIP should be updated to include the information in the project sequencing document. So that was basically with this stormwater submitted, one of the requirements that we, we submitted was this, this project sequencing document. And we tried to get in detail on that. So that's why we, we broke it down into more phases to give the, the board more clarity on kind of what we're, how it's going, how construction's going to go. And I failed to go and make sure that the SWIP also reflected that. So it was basically the same, same sequencing, but the, the SWIP was kind of looking at it from a slightly higher, you know, higher view. So I just, I modified the SWIP to make sure that it, it went into the same level of detail as that sequencing document. Yep, I think that. So I resubmitted that as well. The O and M plan needs to be submitted for stormwater-related infrastructure, infrastructure. That was also amended. So the O and M, the O and M plan that we submitted for the site review didn't, wasn't, didn't have a section that was really focused on stormwater management. And that's what I initially resubmitted because it's what we had, you know, with, submitted and approved of for the first site plan review. So what I. So what I, I've modified that and resubmitted it with some, you know, more detail on what the, what the ONM plan, what they're going to be looking for as far as what constitutes, you know, kind of what triggers maintenance on these specific stormwater structures. So we broke it down in detail on culverts, swales, the detention basin. So that was submitted, signed, again, that was in the submission today, or a few hours ago, really.
Okay, so Adam, that was also with the Graves review? Because I don't have that either.
No, that, that came in in a separate email, maybe 5:30-ish. So I, I haven't even opened the zip file that came in with it. So when, when that gets, when I get into the office tomorrow, I can open that up and send it around. But it was, it was information that came in after the close of business today.
Okay. So basically, the, the comments were from Graves and they've been addressed, but we don't have a, we don't have a confirmation that they've been addressed from Graves?
That's correct. I, honestly, I don't even know if Jeff has seen the email at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
So you raised the question of it being, the detention basin being able to drain within 24 hours. And I'm not clear on, on whether you just assume that because of the soil classification and the permeability rates, or if you have an outlet structure to allow for complete draining within 24 hours? Or what is the response specifically to that?
No, it was 72 hours and the fact that it's a dry basin, it's supposed to, supposed to be dry the majority of the time. So within 72 hours of a storm event,
Yeah.
it could be holding water technically and still qualify as the dry detention basin or the dry basin?
Okay.
And that's all it is. I mean, within, within three days, it's supposed to be dry.
Okay, because I'm just reading the stormwater standards and it talks about the outlet structure. Design the outlet structure to facilitate maintenance, the vital part, so the structure must be accessible, must contain a drawdown valve for complete detention basin draining within 24 hours. So that's from the Stormwater Handbook.
Yeah, this, the, the outlet structure on this is a culvert. It's a discharge. So it will, it, I mean, really the culvert, again, it's been sized to make sure that we're meeting the requirements for each storm. But I think it's, let me just make sure I'm not misquoting. It's a.
So there isn't a valve per se stated in the Stormwater Handbook? You're just assuming that that, that culvert will drain the detention basin? Now, I'm not quite sure why within this, the Stormwater Handbook, it requires draining within 24 hours. I'm assuming that's for a maintenance component. But obviously you can't predict that with a storm, with a major storm event, it's going to drain when the soils allow it to drain and the outlet allows it to drain.
Well, that, that's, that's what the, it's basically a program, that's kind of industry-wide program, HydroCAD, that models, you know, you build the model basically of, you know, that represents this site, this, the soil that it is and the, the ground cover and the size of the basin and the outlet. And it models that, it basically runs it over a course of, you know, a hypothetical storm. And that's how we determine when it will drain, when it will dry out and.
What is, what is the drainage rate at full capacity of the basin? What's, what's the, what's the drainage calculation show? How long does it take to drain?
If, if, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt, if we look at the detail on sheet C 4.0, it's a blow up of the basin, the bottom of the basin is one tenth of a foot lower than the outlet invert. It's outlet controlled, and that's to reduce the rate at which it discharges to meet the existing condition. That's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
That's correct, yep.
So the bottom of the basin is practically level with the outlet.
Okay.
So there's, there's, at most, if it is constructed to the tenth of a foot by the plan, then it will have one tenth of water being held.
So what is, what is Jeff's comment? So you've addressed Jeff's comment?
Um, which, about the freeboard, I think that was further down.
Yes, it's further down. If you can move further down.
I, I thought we were going comment by comment. That's the only reason I haven't jumped down.
Okay.
Well, I, I touched on up to four, unless anyone had questions.
Specifically, page number eight that I'm questioning.
Yep. So that, really what that was, was it was a mistake on one call out. So the grading showed the correct elevation and the HydroCAD model had the correct information, had the correct elevation in it. So you can see that.
This area here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, exactly. So the berm, the top of this basin berm is 466.5. To meet the standards, this spillway, the emergency overflow riprap apron would need to be one foot below that, 465.5. That was modeled correctly and is actually, you know, if you look at the 3D grading, it was correct. But that call out, we missed correcting, fixing that. So I've.
So that correction, that, that comment is more about how much the basin is going to hold before it hits the emergency spillway than it is about how quickly it drains.
Right.
Yes.
I understand freeboard having.
I, I just want, I was trying to clarify to make sure I was on the same page as where everyone else was.
Yep. And that emergencies, that's an emergency spillway, so even the 100-year storm. Yeah, for, even the 100-year storm didn't need to utilize that emergency. That's, so that's a, that is a true emergency overflow. But yeah, most of, you know, for typical storms, it's just going to go out that eight-inch culvert. And like Mr. Chairman said, it's at the bottom of the basin, so there's, you know, it basically drains, there's really no use for a valve on a system like this. Oftentimes, there'll be like a, an outlet control structure that's like a concrete box, you know, with orifices and going into a culvert that, and like an underdrain potentially, that's, you know, you would need to put a valve in on like an underdrain if you need to, for a system like that.
So in place of that, you've installed an emergency spillway?
Um, well, it's not really necessarily in place of that. It's more that, because this is a, this is a very, a simple design. It's more simple than, you know, some other stormwater structures for larger flows, larger, higher percent of impervious areas. So because of that simplicity, it, it's not required to, to, there's nowhere for that valve really to go in a simple system like this. It's just a basin with a culvert outlet at the bottom. It's not elevated or anything like that, other than that tenth of a foot. But actually, in the revised submission, I think that tenth of a foot is actually also, was removed. That, that's supposed to be flush for all intents and purposes. And as far as the, this detention time for the 100-year. Pull up the timeframe that it drains by. As part of the stormwater report is HydroCAD report is included as an appendices to that stormwater report. Yeah, so it's only got a detention time of 38 minutes. So basically, depending on the storm. But for the 100-year storm, it's got a detention time or a center of mass detention time of 38 minutes. So it's, for, for a system like this with a culvert right at the bottom, that the detention, there's, there's really no way for it to hold that amount, you know, any water for a day, never mind 72 hours. Just because, you know, that pipe is going to let it all discharge. I think that's really all the comments that Graves had. You can see six and seven were just more, you know, just observations that they reviewed the computations and found them in order.
Very good. So any, any more questions, comments? It is a public hearing, so we'll, we'll reach out to the public in a minute.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Where is the outlet pipe? I'm trying, I'm trying, looking at the plan and where does it discharge to? Where's the discharge point?
Um, it's a big triangle with some hay bales around it. It's, uh, in the, well.
This right here is, is where come, this is the basin, this is the outlet pipe. This little triangle here is a flared end section and some riprap. So it discharges out to the lower corner of the property and then travels overland. You can see they've got a grade here that pulls it back towards the property here.
Okay, that's, that actually you just answered my question. So I'm trying to understand the grading at the discharge point.
So it's, it's already, you can see it's sloping back this way and they're pulling this grade here, here, here and here to keep the water flowing around the panels is, is how I interpret it. And I'll, I'll let Brandon answer if that's correct.
Yeah, so that's, those are erosion controls, dark.
Oh, okay.
So basically what the intent is, it's similar to what you're, what you're saying though, where that discharge, so we have the riprap, a large riprap area to stabilize and kind of slow down that flow so that it doesn't erode, you know, cause issues like that once it comes out of the pipe. But then it will run overland and those erosion controls are to try, just to make sure that the water, you know, is properly filtered and kind of deflected it to the, the west where we are going to have some, like, we specified wood strand berm, that dashed line. And just to ensure that there, you know, there's no silt laden runoff exiting our site control.
Right, because beyond that, there's a, there's a wetland and you have the 50-foot, 50-foot wetland buffer for no structure shown. And I'm trying to understand if the, if the retention time of this detention basin is as fast as 38 minutes in the, in the 100-year storm. Basically what you're saying is water's going to go into this detention basin and come right out. So I'm trying to understand what filtering is going to take place if in fact it's just going to go in and out.
Well, it's not designed to filter. So no, post-construction, like post-construction, post-stabilization, it's just going to be a, you know, a wooded, or not wooded, a grass field that when rainfall falls on it, it's good, get diverted to that basin. And just, basically it's, its goal is to make sure that there's not a, in large storms, there's not a, a large quantity of water coming off the study. So it will trap some of that water and sometimes all it takes is, you know, 40 minutes to cut down that peak flow because typically the storms we, you know, that we're concerned about have really short but high intensity peaks. So it's to capture that peak and then discharge it at more of an even, an even discharge rate that the surrounding, you know, streams and water, grass, you know, wetland areas can handle and are accustomed to handling because of pre-development conditions.
What was prior to the, what was the land use prior to the solar array?
It's wooded, so it's undeveloped for the most part. There, you know, there has been some activity, I think in the past, it's like a dirt road, dirt trail.
There was some forest cutting happening on the property.
Yeah.
Prior to that, and, and it was wooded prior to the forest cutting.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the Stormwater Handbook. Do not use dry detention basins by themselves in low-density residential areas where soluble nutrients from pesticides and fertilizers may be a concern. So this, that's not a concern because it was forested.
Correct. They, we don't use any, there's basically, the, the reason that we can use these dry detention basins, because you're right, you'll probably see like the industry for subdivisions for, you know, heavily developed areas, they're trying to move away from dry detention basin type areas because it doesn't treat, like you said, it doesn't filter. But for a site like this, that there's no vehicles, there's no lawns that people are putting, you know, pesticides, there's, there's literally no, there's nothing to filter as long as, you know, it's stabilized, which obviously that's the goal, it will be fully stabilized, so there's not going to be any sediment transport. So there's nothing to filter. And then because of that, that's why we use these dry detention basins for sites like this.
Okay, so the, the, in your application, and I did happen to get it for some reason, in your stormwater report, you talk about vehicle refueling and washing of vehicles. And where is all that going to happen?
So that's only during construction.
Okay.
They get cleared. So this is more, the stormwater is more of like a post-construction, you know, perpetual system. But during construction, those activities may take place and, and, you know, they'll likely take place closer to the street in that we put that turnaround to the kind of east for, to be used for construction.
Yes, that vehicle turnaround to be used as lay-down area during construction. So that's where that would occur. What protections are going to be in place from a stormwater standpoint during that? And I was surprised in the application when you talk about washing of vehicles because I'm not sure why you would do that onsite.
Yeah, I mean.
Any stormwater protection?
I'm sorry, I, I spoke over you on that last part.
There's limited, um, there's limited decontamination of soils, I mean, of stormwater in this plan. I mean, basically the water's going to go into this dry detention basin and go out via that culvert and eventually meander overland to that wetland in the back. So the activity that you outlined in the report, the refueling, fueling of vehicles, the washing of vehicles, if that happens in that vehicle turnaround area, which is, which is, you know, not that far away from this stormwater basin, what protections are in place from a stormwater standard, standard for that area?
Um, so anything like that being done would, you know, need to be done in an area, an upland area, so away from any wetlands, it would need to be done away, or I'm sorry, surrounded and protected by any erosion control measures and done, you know, with due diligence and care to ensure that, you know, they don't spill any fuel. Obviously mistakes happen, but the other thing is weather permitting. You're not going to do it in a downpour, you know, refueling the site, the trucks.
Yeah, I mean, you've got a concrete washout basin, you have, you know, so I'm just, from a stormwater standpoint, and I understand that the wetlands is, is conservation commissioned jurisdiction. From a stormwater standpoint, and I understand that the wetlands is is conservation commissioned jurisdiction. But I'm trying to understand. I agree with all the protections you just said, but I'm not seeing them on the plan.
Well, if you if you zoom in, we do have erosion. If you zoom in on that. Turnaround area, we we do have. Erosion control. Measures kind of surrounding that area for that purpose. You can see that silt fence, silt fence is kind of that dark thick. Line with the box in it.
Hay bales, anything to continue to to slow up, slow runoff rates. The silt fence is going to go right under.
Well, silt fence, if properly installed, should be keyed into the soil. So it's buried into the soil. So nothing will be going under it. You know, it's not just placed like. Top of the soil. So that should. You know. As far as petroleum products, it's not really designed for that, but. It should protect the area from any like vehicle washing, for example, what they're referring to there and. And just to to state, as far as these items that are listed in there, that's kind of to cover things that may happen. It typically is not very common. You know, unless there's an extreme amount of mud or something like that, that they'd be wa- washing the tires. But typically, it's not done. That's what the stabilized exit is for to to kind of knock some of that dirt off and make sure it stays on site.
And what about the refueling? Why are you going to be doing refueling onsite?
Well, during construction, there's heavy equipment onsite that's brought to site, you know, tree clearing, grading. And, you know, that's not really feasible to bring them somewhere to refuel if they need.
My job like fuel fuel fluids and and diesel fuel.
Right, right.
And would that be done in the location where the equipment is or would it be done on this on this turnout pad?
Well, the intent is for it to be done on this turnout pad or on the equipment pad area. You know, outside, there's specifications, you know, again, that outside of. Any. It needs to be in an upland area, that type of thing.
And where is that spelled out that that needs to be done in an upland area, etc.?
I believe that is in the SWIP, but I don't.
Because I didn't see it.
Have that specific line item memorized.
I'm pretty sure the construction operation and maintenance is is included in the long term maintenance with the SWIP. Is that true? There's short term and long term requirement?
Yes, and actually, thank you for mentioning that. I believe it is listed in the long term pollution prevention plan. That's where I'm thinking of it, which was submitted.
Do you know when that was submitted? Because I didn't see specific reference to that in the information I received.
I think that may have been. Sent a little bit after the. Initial application package.
So I have the four nine stormwater report. Is that what you're talking about?
No, what I'm referring to is the. It's called it's part of the O and M plan. It is, and it's a section at the end called long term pollution prevention plan. That does cover again, long term. So it's not really construction level. Let me just see here. Yeah, I don't see the specific line item that I'm thinking of, but I mean, it. It is pretty, it's industry standard construction. Like every construction site means heavy equipment that, you know, can't just go to the gas station. So it's not really anything. I guess, specific to this, specific to solar, I should say. It it is, you know, any competent site supervisor will ensure that they do that. According to.
So what would you typically put in in that statement that you were looking for and didn't find?
Basically, that any refueling must be done in an upland area.
What about vehicle washing?
I mean, vehicle washing would be done in designated areas. This is so this what Adam has up is the long term pollution prevention. So. Like vehicles will be washed offsite.
That's not what you have in the stormwater. The the report that I received from Missouri on four dated four nine.
That's for construction. So construction to avoid. It's a little bit confusing. Basically, this long term. Mention plan is kind of talking about during operation, after construction is done, you know, how that's controlled. During construction, there may be situations, you know, that we don't want to track. Mud or dirt, whatever it might be off site. So they spray down the vehicles. I don't anticipate that happening, but. You know, if there's a concern about dirt getting on the on the road, then they may do that. So. That's what the SWIP is referring to.
Yeah. So, you know, I just personally, you know, I understand what you're saying is this is a solar project. There's not a lot of. Impervious area. There's not a huge stormwater concern. I think the design that you have makes sense because it's basically running, it's going to be running over grasslands and and. Basically being diverted to the wetland. But my question is during construction. And in looking at the information that I received on four nine, it does talk about vehicle refueling and vehicle washing. And that because there isn't any kind of storm extensive stormwater protections or designated areas for that use. That's my concern. So I would want that incorporated in the special permit in the stormwater permit approval. And basically, just exactly what you said is that. Vehicles be fueled in an upland area and that vehicle washing has to be done designated areas. And I would assume that would be that turnaround area because of the silt water and erosion. The silt fences and erosion control protections you're going to have there.
Yeah, I mean, and I see no reason why that couldn't be a condition that's perfectly, you know, that they could follow to no no problem. You know, like I said, I don't foresee there being a ton of those activities onsite, if if any.
Would would you be more comfortable with them designating fueling areas, Paula, than just saying in an upland area?
Yes.
So if they were to indicate on the plan. You know, whether it's this turnaround or this equipment pad, that those would be the two areas where refueling is is acceptable.
Absolutely.
Is is that something that you can work with, Brandon?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I think that's that's perfectly fine.
And and I think we can take by the washout basin that that's where you intend to wash vehicles, if if at all.
Well, yeah, and that's for that's specifically that's for concrete, you know.
Okay.
When the pads get poured, they're going to wash the truck out there to make sure that that material is contained.
But if you're using it to wash mud off of tires, I wouldn't imagine you'd go much further into the site than there anyway, because.
Right, exactly.
Well, again, as he said, that's what the that's what the stabilized entrance is for. All right, does the do the board members have any more questions, comments, concerns? Any public interested in asking or commenting or? Having something to say?
I see no hands raised.
Okay.
If I. If I may have one one thing, just given that. We I would need a if if the board decides to vote tonight. Given that I would need an unanimous vote, would it be possible to do a straw vote? Prior to the official vote so that in case I need. To go back and revise anything to make sure the board is happy.
Well, I'm not sure. Honestly, it would be prudent of us to take a vote at this point when we have not actually seen the response. The second response from our review engineer and anybody is welcome to weigh in on that.
Tanner has his hand raised.
Yes, please.
Am I? Okay.
You're you're good.
I couldn't unmute myself. Sorry about that. I did want to see if we could get clarification on what has changed. That at the beginning of his presentation, Brandon mentioned that some tree clearing had been changed. And I know on this site in particular, we made some allowances and let them clear beyond the two hundred foot buffer.
Specifically up in this area here near the equipment pads in exchange for the the negotiated replantings.
Yep, but if you look at the plan, even on the, I guess that would be the west side of the property. They're going beyond the. Buffer line there. So. I mean, he he mentioned that it was minor and, you know, I. Kind of take his word for it, but at the same time, it'd be good to see that. The plan that we approved and granted a special permit for hasn't substantially changed because. They haven't made any application for a de minimis change with us. So essentially, now we're off the path. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm I just want to clarify. So the change that I'm referring to is not necessarily. I not a change to our. Plan approved plan per se. It's a change. It's a slight modification of what actually is onsite. So we. We modified our our hydro our hide hydro a hydro cad model to be more accurate to what is actually there. So like our tree clearing lines, we, you know, we stayed true to the the plans. Those haven't changed. If anything, I think we did. We're clearing less on the north. I think we pulled that in because there was no shading impact. But as far as the changes I'm referring to, it's more like we went out and said, oh, in the middle, you know, in the middle of the right. This area is actually, you know, wooded and we had a little bit of a clearing modeled like let's make sure this is this is accurate. So it's those type of changes.
So you underestimated the existing cover. So the change is actually by putting the field in, there's an increase in flow rate?
Right, yeah. And then, yeah, there were some other changes like, oh, the property line is not actually like, you know, we kind of. Fine tune where that is or maybe more accurate. Which adjusted some areas. But it wasn't changes to like our actual plan of what we're planning on building.
Okay.
Bring up a good point, Mr. Cole, about the de minimis change, but as and I did understand him to say that they. They updated their calculations based on refined field observations as they were onsite. And every everything that he described, in my understanding, would have lent to increasing his runoff. Quantities and rates. And if that's been re reviewed by the engineer by Graves, then I I think that would be great. It's just, I, like I said, I don't, I I'm not comfortable. Not that I suspect anybody is pulling anybody's. Any wool over anybody's eyes, but it's just, it would behoove us, it would be better decision to actually have that in hand.
Understandable. I just wanted to mention in case, I just want to get that out there in case, but I can understand that.
And would the board like to see those refueling spots noted on the plan and included in the final plan set?
Well, all right. So my take on that is that conservation has has signed off on this with no concerns, right?
That's correct.
Conservation is is concerned with everything that's not upland and everything that's outside of the hundred foot buffer zone is upland. As as I understood it was described, everything is consistent with. Our general construction in this previously undeveloped wooded area. With the exception of the dry detention. In my experience, everything, all the details they've shown and the measures that they've taken are in conformance with this type of construction. So I mean, good, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in the application for the stormwater permit, it very clearly states that there may be vehicle refueling as well as vehicle washing. As you said, upland areas are outside of the jurisdiction of conservation commission, but stormwater is within the jurisdiction of the planning board. And my concern specifically is in regards to stormwater contaminate contaminated stormwater and the ability of that to threaten. Environmental areas and stormwater is under our jurisdiction. And because of the very limited stormwater structures that are proposed on this site, because of the nature of the development, I think it is within our purview and within our. And personally, I think it would be an obligation to ensure that during construction. Stormwater is not contaminated and does not contaminate wetlands, and that is outside of the scope of conservation, but certainly within ours. And I think that. As the engineer has stated, he doesn't have a problem with it. So I don't know why we wouldn't request that that be added to the plan.
Okay, no, that's that's and that's fine. I mean, I would, you know, the more the more information, the better. But again, there's there's very little actual disturbance going on in this site.
Once construction, but there will be, you know, there will be concrete pads poured. There will be heavy equipment being refueled. There will be during construction. I would agree with you completely at following construction. But during construction, there is not and and there is not a lot of stormwater protection on the site, as I said, because of the nature of the passive, the passive nature of it once it's complete. But while under construction, the the potential for stormwater contamination is there.
Now. Adam, isn't it, isn't it true that the that our agent will be onsite during construction monitoring? Not our agent, but the conservation agent?
The conservation agent will go and monitor, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if we want to request the information, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't know if Tanner wants to chime in. He's muted.
He muted himself this time.
He's talking, but he's not his voice isn't coming out. There he goes.
The host won't allow me to unmute. I don't know. Yeah, it no, I agree with Paula that especially during construction, we got to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's. I know. For a fact, there are two other solar sites that have had serious. Issues with stormwater. And so it's not to be taken lightly.
Very good.
So I would agree that we should continue this public hearing until we get feedback from our reviewing engineer. And I would ask that the engineer include that verbiage on the plan and forward it the revised plan to us.
So you would like to get Graves review and then also have Brandon revise the plans?
Yeah, to include the fueling area and the vehicle washing area.
Yep, I I can make that change and. Like like I mentioned, I sent out a response to Graves earlier today, but I'll just follow that up with this this revised plans. So they can Jeff can take a look at it and provide you with his findings.
Very good. And would you would you? You wouldn't have a problem continuing to our next meeting?
No, I, you know, obviously, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we can move forward with this. So.
That's very good. I'd just like to have everybody agreeable.
Mm-hmm.
So do we need to, a motion in a second?
Yes. Yep, 22 June.
Unless anybody's got anything else, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak up?
Not seeing anything.
All right, I would take a motion then.
I would make a motion to continue the public hearing for 190 Electric Avenue Stormwater Permit to June 22nd.
At six? Six thirty-five PM?
At six thirty-five. Tanner's muted again.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, Mr. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Appreciate the time, and I'll uh talk to you guys on the 22nd.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, so now uh our next item is stormwater bylaw, discussion with CEI consultant.
Probably need to unmute you, huh, Nick? There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Do you want to do a quick, quick introduction, Adam, or you want me to just take a little?
No, we can, we can do a quick introduction. Uh, this is Nick Cristofori. He works for Comprehensive Environmental, Inc. Uh, he's been working with the Stormwater Task Force for going on a year now to uh drag us kicking and screaming into compliance with the uh uh MS4 permit. Uh, we're in our second year and it's uh CEI's first year working with us. And uh so far, uh, we've had a a great relationship and and things have been going well. Uh, and and he is the one who has drafted a majority of these regulation changes uh that don't come straight from the permit that we've been talking about for all these many months before the COVID came and kicked us all home. So uh I know that uh we've gone through this a number of times and and we've made a a number of changes. And Nick has looked over those and made some other changes of his own. Uh, and I know there's still some outstanding questions that uh board members had that I I think are are probably better answered by Nick as he knows. Uh, he's probably forgotten more about this stuff than I ever knew. And he got the right shirt color tonight, so.
Yes, I got the memo. So I mean, I guess just a little bit of background information. I mean, we're doing a similar thing with about 15 or 20 different communities. And um the good thing for Lunenburg is your bylaw and regulations are in better shape to begin with than like 95% of my communities, if not all of them. So you had comparatively few changes that really needed to be made to your existing regulations. Um, most of the changes that we that we brought in were really just to do some clarification. And then the only other really big change we made was to update the stormwater standards to match the permit. And other than that, there wasn't a whole lot that needed to be changed. So you guys, you know, it was good. Um, so I don't know, I mean, do you want to walk through these bylaws? Or, I mean, I guess, well, you know, it's it's kind of up to you guys and girls.
I'm gonna sort of let the the board members uh drive on this because, you know, we've talked about this a lot. Um, there's a fair amount of of change that has gone back and forth. And I think at this point, we're kind of on some really pointed questions. Uh, and if I'm not mistaken, there are a little further down. Uh, hopefully, no one gets seasick as I scroll through the document. Um. This we've talked about, uh, and I think the board is sticking with with what's there about disturbance of an acre. Uh, there was question about the why would we exempt um state and federal agencies? Uh, and I think that might be probably the best place to start, but I'll I'll, like I said, defer back to the board.
Um, well, Nick, welcome. Uh, we get to meet in my different, my other capacity. We've we've worked with you on the Stormwater Committee. Um, so I don't, I don't know how uh the other members feel. Um, I'll defer to them.
I think discussing the points that we've had a lot of conversation about, as Adam just said, makes the most sense. Um, so if we go back up to, uh, if you can go up a little bit more, Adam?
How far up?
Right here. Um. So the low impact development, we talked about that. Um, and NC2, I'm assuming that's you, Nick?
Correct.
Okay, so you talked about including more information on low impact development and techniques or reference an outside manual or something. So I guess that's, you know, I is that, do we incorporate more low impact development um recommendations? Or do we just reference the um the MP manual or what what do we, what would you recommend in that particular situation?
Well, there's nothing that's really required strictly from the permit to to handle this. I was just thinking, you know, it may just be worthwhile just to point them in the right direction. Um, you don't have to, you can just leave it as the way it is right now. Um, but, you know, like some, for instance, some, one community I work with has a separate low impact development manual that they basically provide as a reference guide that says, you know, these are the kind of things we're looking at. Um, minimize impervious area, so you only have, you you put a limit, say, on um the width of roadways. Um, sometimes they do things like encouraging open channel designs and open channel drainage to make things a little bit easier to maintain and more visual rather than running everything through closed drainage, like catch basins and pipes. So it can really be as far or as not far as as the board would like to take it.
For personal, I think leaving this the way it is now, but I would be very interested in finding out if that community would be willing to share their low impact development handbook, and maybe that's something we look at for for implementing in the future.
I'm sure they would have no issues with it, and I can forward it to you tomorrow.
Awesome.
So I I will mention, uh, in the past, we've had um land divisions and developments. And um the soils have been A and B soil, and the suggestion has been made multiple times from the members of the board, the various members of the board, um, to pre look at low impact development. And we just end up approving a plan with one or two or three uh dynamic separator separators. Which we don't have, we don't have a VAT truck, so the more we get, the less we're going to be able to do.
Exactly.
Hmm, yeah, I mean, what's a little bit interesting about this other community, it's it's actually, it's town of Westminster, so it's not far from you guys. Um, they have two different triggers, so their regular MS4 bylaw trigger is the same thing as you guys do, right at an acre. But they're, they have separate low impact development regulations that trigger at 10,000 square feet. So what they were trying to do is they wanted to target some of these smaller developments to try and get something in place, you know, rather than if not having to go through the full stormwater handbook as far as MS4 is concerned, at least get some controls in place, which is sort of an interesting, interesting approach. So, you know, again, if the board wanted to consider something like that in the future, you're certainly welcome to. You're not required under MS4, but, you know, it does help protect the environment.
Yeah, I personally, you know, I believe that stormwater is one of the biggest pollutants that we face as a nation. And and I am very interested in encouraging and requiring low impact development. Um, and I'd really like to see us incorporate that. And my goal is not just to meet the standards for the MS4, but to make a positive impact on stormwater contamination, um, and and really do everything we can as a community um to reduce pollution loads. So I personally would be very interested in looking at that. And I know other members have expressed interest in in seeing what other communities are doing as far as low impact development. And the fact that they actually trigger a requirement for low impact development at 10,000 square feet, I'd really be interested in seeing more about that.
I I think I may have shared that bylaw with you guys back in uh late January or mid February uh when we were really in the middle of this, because I I I recall Nick and I talking about that too.
It does sound familiar, but that was before every day was Blair's Day.
Yeah. So if you could resend it, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, Adam, you can, you and I can get together quick tomorrow and then um I'll kick it back over you.
Excellent.
You had a question, if you go down on NC5, that you were confused on?
Yeah, so I think my biggest confusion was, um, this is, this is in reference to the the purple comment above. This board suggested change. Towards the end, it says, "All new development and redevelopment on jurisdiction of this bylaw shall be required to main obtain a storm management permit." Um, so I guess that's just under, I guess that's just under the one acre anyway, because that would be with the jurisdiction of the bylaw. Um. Development, you want to increase the amount of stormwater. So basically, I think what it is actually is the first. So you say, "This bylaw should be applicable to all new development and redevelopment, including site plan approval subdivision um that will result in increased amount of stormwater runoff or pollutants." So the way I read that is that you're essentially saying that any development in the, irregardless of how much it disturbs, is going to have to meet these regulations. If they have to come in through site plan approval subdivision, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, that's, to me, that seems like you're you're eliminating that one acre threshold and just tying it to anything that is increasing stormwater runoff. So you can be, you.
Good, good.
So I was gonna say, that seems like that could be pulling in a lot more projects than a one acre threshold.
And I would ask, if we have the authority, if a project is designated redevelopment, do we have that ability? Because I know we had a recent project that was surrounded by wetlands, and I think we all know what it was, and they refused to do much because they didn't have to.
Hmm. Um, well, I mean, it's really, I mean, it it really gets up to you guys. I mean, you don't have to stick with that one acre threshold. You can go to a smaller threshold. Um, for instance, Town of Dennis, I believe, they trigger at 20,000 square feet. And it is entirely up to the town as to what you want that trigger to be. You, it just has to be, it it just has to be an acre. You know, you can't go two acres because that's what the permit requires. But if you wanted to trigger these regulations at a smaller threshold, then you are, you are welcome to do that.
I I guess I made my my roundabout question was, can we, can we um, can we make a stormwater bylaw that is more strict than the redevelopment allowances?
Absolutely.
Okay. No more questions? Nice.
So I think, I I don't mind leaving the one acre and maybe making that an or. But if you're increasing the amount of stormwater runoff from a parcel or you're altering the drainage characteristics due to a parcel of land, then I do think you need a stormwater permit. Um, but I guess that's up for discussion. Honestly, I don't remember, this has been such a long conversation. I don't remember when we came up with that, but I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are.
Well, it's up to you. I do like the idea of having some acreage as a trigger. And like I said, if you want to go down to 10,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet, I think that's that's reasonable. Other communities do that. Um, I'm a little bit hesitant to say, you know, anything that changes stormwater runoff. Because I mean, you know, you add a garage onto your house and you're changing stormwater runoff.
True.
Um, you know, you could just, you could be really, really pulling in a lot of projects.
I think we would, eh eh almost everything that came through the building department would end up here for stormwater if it was anything other than altering an existing structure. Because there's so many not flat lots that that create so much. Uh, and through site plan, we require compliance with stormwater management. Uh, and while right now EPA's thresholds in the permit don't match the state stormwater management, they're in the process of trying to negotiate getting the two to sort of meet in the middle and 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 being compliant. So we're getting compliance with a good majority of this through our site plan anyway for those smaller projects. Uh, and if, like Nick says, if you want to reduce the one acre and make it 20,000, you're going to capture most of, most everything except for the really small residential, single lot kind of stuff or um really, really small additions to commercial uses.
And that's another thing, Adam, you know, you can build in exemptions for additions to single-family houses. You can, you can, you can make this whatever you want to, for the most part. Um, you know, you just, you got to meet the minimum requirements under the permit, which you guys are at right now. So, you know, this, this is your opportunity to to rework these for the next, you know, decade or whatever it is you want to make of it. Um, so if there are things you'd like to, you'd like to do to change these and and tighten them up, then I would say absolutely, you know, let's, let's work on it, let's, let's do it.
My preference would be to stick with the one acre. I feel like we learned some valuable lessons when we went through the earth removal process. And I wouldn't want to get to town meeting and end up with nothing. Um, you know, and so if we can bring this into line with what the MS4 process looks like, then I think that makes sense.
So I guess the bottom line is if we, if we leave it at one acre, then we can't require projects of less than one acre of anything, can we?
Not under this bylaw. You know, if you were to go through and and pursue a separate lid bylaw, low impact development bylaw with a smaller threshold, you could, you could trigger them for that. Um, Westminster's lid bylaw has much less requirements than what the full MS4 stormwater bylaw does. Um, it's a little bit more, you know, I don't know, loose, I guess, as far as the types of things that need to get done to address it. But it still does come, you know, it still triggers a review and that kind of thing.
But, Mr. Chair, if I may, as Adam said earlier, site plan approval picks up a lot of this stuff anyway. Because that's all geared around these best management practices, and so that should capture a lot of the small projects. I won't say that it captures all of them, but um.
Well, site plan review only catches stormwater issues if there's somebody, one member of the board, or at least one member of the board that brings it up. I don't think site plan review really addresses specifically in verbiage stormwater, does it?
Yeah, require, it it does.
It requires con- conformance with the stormwater handbook.
Correct.
Yeah.
Eh, I I think, you know, to Nick's point, if if the board is interested in a lid bylaw and you marry the two together, it becomes something that is catching those projects that are between nothing and one acre that go through that process.
Yeah, and then the the lid, the lid um BMPs are much less expensive as well, correct? That's for Nick?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I think what it typically is, is you're not, you're not required to infiltrate, you know, like a one-inch stoner van and and meet all these different stormwater standards that are specifically outlined in the MS4 permit. It's, it's a little bit more, um, you know, making sure that you're disconnecting roof leaders and driveways if possible and stuff like that.
And ditches and grass swales and stuff.
Yep, yep.
Landscape, yeah. I mean, I would definitely be interested in in pursuing a a lid bylaw for for smaller acreages or areas. But uh a- as Mr. Cole said, I think that um, I think uh that we should leave well enough alone uh as far as the size. And if if we feel that we need to be more protective, as as Ms. Bertram has mentioned, that we should focus on some of the specifics uh regardless of the size.
I agree.
Okay. Good. Um, so are there some specifics in here that would help us to address the environmental issues better?
As far as what?
As far as your comments. I mean, because like you said, we've got a bylaw that meets the MS4, so we're, we're good for now. Um, other than, yeah, other than including a a low impact development bylaw, um. Where do you see any other things that we could address without changing the acreage uh, to help the environment better?
I think that'd be a good approach, I mean, I think the way it is right now is, you know, you have this one, which is going to cover your MS four requirements, and you know, it for the most part, if people ask about it, you can say, hey, listen, this is exactly what is required by EPA's, you know, federal permit that all these different communities in Massachusetts need to hit. You know, we have, we haven't deviated from it, we're still at an acre, we haven't changed or made more um, you know, restrictive, any of the new development and redevelopment requirements, so really, you you're just saying, this is what EPA is telling us we have to do, so this is why we did it. And then in the future, you know, if you wanted to do a lid, a lid by law that triggered something smaller, then you could you could cross that bridge later. But um, you know, I think for the purposes of this by law, I I like the idea of keeping it really strictly to the permit.
Okay. Anybody disagree?
No.
No.
Comment number um, NC eight, which is exemption for the town. I personally don't believe that state or federal agents, I mean, local or state agency can be exempt from a by law that everyone else has to follow, whether it was in the previous by law or not, as you said, this is our opportunity to tweak it. And and I don't think we should be exempting ourselves from the rules.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but the the state and municipality is exempt from the zoning by law, but not the general?
Uh, depends on the zoning by law, so um, the municipality isn't exempt from setbacks or height or or those sorts of things, but most municipalities, ours included, exempt most municipal uses. And I say exempt, they just allow them in all zones. So from a use perspective, yes, they're they're generally universally allowed. From a parking calculation or setback or all of those, they're required to comply.
Unless they're a school. Okay.
Well, that that's.
I know.
That that's up to each approving authority in each individual community to manage.
But we're talking about stormwater and and the pollution caused by stormwater, and and I don't think we should be exempt from following the rules. If we're going to make everyone else live with them, I think we should too.
I certainly do disagree.
Okay.
So I would I would like to remove that exemption.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Next thing I have issue with is um, it's actually before, but NC twelve. And it's actually before that, Adam, it's uh, number two, standard projects, show me the standards of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy. My issue with that, and I and we've talked about this um, when we did the approval for thirteen twenty five Mass Ave, is the stormwater handbook is very, very specific, and if you guys remember on that particular project, it was infiltration basins. And there were a number of things that they had to go back and do that hadn't been done, such as soil soil boring. And one of the stormwater standards for an infiltration basin is requires a monitoring well. We did not require the monitoring well, they did do the soil boring. And in talking to our reviewing engineer Jeff Walsh, as well, or seeing his reviews, as well as talking to the design engineers, they all talked about this is an engineering accepted practice. So in our by law, we say we have to meet the standards of the mass stormwater management policy, but in fact, we don't necessarily make if we want to meet that standard. So I'm questioning if we want to somehow put fix that language, because we don't require that everyone meets the standards of the mass stormwater management policy.
Yeah, let me look at tweaking that a little bit, because actually technically, I don't believe there is a stormwater management policy anymore, it's just the handbook.
Right, but but and it's really the handbook, it's not stormwater management policy, it's the stormwater handbook. And and really, my question is, is compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook absolutely required by the state, or does the planning board have the ability to lessen those regulations?
Well, I think is you have to do, so everything I added below this in the red, this is this is strictly 100% from the permit, this has to be done. There is some guidance open to interpretation on the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, it's it's a guide document. It has been out for a number of years now, and there are some some items in it that are just out of date, not necessary, not industry standard practice. So there is definitely some some areas of it that are open to interpretation, particularly when those kinds of you know, kind of nitty gritty things like having a monitoring well and stuff like that in place. You know, you as an engineer, you have to you have to reasonably determine where your seasonally high groundwater table is and what your infiltration rates are by some methodology. Digging a test pit, doing a soil boring, doing a double ring infiltrometer test, you know, et cetera, et cetera. In my opinion, I mean, as long as you have done that and you have done your due diligence to ascertain that information, then you don't necessarily need to do, you know, the letter of the law that says, okay, you need to have a infiltration or a a monitoring well, it's one inch diameter and driven down 40 feet, blah, blah, blah. So I would say that yes, there is definitely some, the board is allowed to have some interpretation on many of these things.
Maybe say to the fullest extent possible or something, but I think we've got to fix that. I think I think we've got to fix the wording of number two.
Well, and I I think if we if we look at it, your issue more, Paula, might be with C as opposed to two itself, where it says stormwater management system design shall be consistent with or more stringent than the requirements of the stormwater handbook.
Yes, and and we have been doing that, I mean, so for example, for an infiltration basin, it requires soil borings of at least 20 feet. In our last application, they never did a soil boring of 22, 20 feet, because they didn't meet refusal, they met a rock that they couldn't get past the equipment, but it wasn't actual refusal such as ledge, so we, okay, we're going to go with that. So to say now that they have to be consistent with or more stringent than the requirements of the mass stormwater handbook, we're not making them do that, so I think we need to fix that language.
And and I think what I'm hearing Nick saying is the can by by using the word consistent, it it leaves it open to interpretation of the board to say, is this design serving the same functions and consistent with the intent and general practice outlined in the stormwater handbook, if it isn't consistent with the absolute minutia that is in certain parts of it, and and correct me if I'm wrong, if that's what I'm I'm hearing.
Yes, no, I think you're 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 correct.
Number two and number C and and two C, are they one in the same thing? Or is there a stormwater policy versus a stormwater handbook? And I think is concerned as I I don't know if I, I think I'd like to change, clean up that language a little bit, saying it shall be consistent with or more stringent than implies that absolute compliance is is required, and we're not necessarily requiring that, I do like that certain things we don't want to waive, so um, and you've highlighted some of those things. But I'd like to to kind of think about the wording on two C.
Okay. Well, but what I can do is let me take a stab at rewording some of this information probably tomorrow, and I can send it over to Adam, and we can we can talk about a couple of different ideas.
Okay, great.
Because I don't think there's a lot of changes that we need to make. I think we can turn this around pretty quick.
Yes, I think so too, fantastic job.
Thank you.
And other than that, I'm fine with the rest of it, I don't have major issues with the rest of it, I as I said earlier, I do want to start really looking at the L I LID policy and and looking at incorporating something like that, but as far as the by law itself, other than the things we've talked about, I don't have any other concerns.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, do I.
I'm fine.
That makes four.
Yep. My dogs are fine too.
Excellent, well, Adam, Nick, thank you for your thank you for your work.
Thanks for hanging in, Nick, for that uh, discussion.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And we'll touch base tomorrow.
Yep. Sounds good.
Sounds good, thanks, Nick.
All right, thank you, have a good night, everyone.
All right, um, now we're on to minutes approval. We got minutes for four thirteen, the meeting and four thirteen, the hearing.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of four thirteen twenty.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Aye for myself. And I would take a motion for the the hearing.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of April thirteenth, twenty twenty for thirteen twenty five Mass Ave.
Second.
Excellent discussion. Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Excellent, uh, director's items.
That's me. So we'll start with the easy one first, Baker Brook, the final building at the Tri-Town Estates uh, project has been issued a permit, and if they haven't begun construction already, they will be starting it very, very shortly. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting there. I I don't know at this point, uh, maybe mid-May, uh, and they're they're funded and and ready to go, and and they're anticipating a sixteen to eighteen month construction period. Uh, so they're hoping to have the building up and uh, watertight by the time the snow flies, and then to work through the winter fitting it out and have it open for next summer. Uh, so that will be the seventy senior units. Sixty-two one bedroom and eight two bedroom. Uh, so that will round out the Tri-Town project. Uh, and we are going to be sending the final paperwork to the state to round out the potential for forty S payments for all of those units uh, before the end of this week.
Nice.
Maybe we'll get some more money.
So I guess this brings us back to um, what you said forty S, I thought that was a forty R project.
It is a forty R project, forty S is the section of law that provides funding to communities who have uh, created forty R districts to supplement the uh, school budgets for the introduction of uh, additional children and expenses through the increased density of developed areas under forty R.
Okay, and do we need to have a forty R officer?
That's me.
That is you.
Per the per the by law.
Okay, very good. Very good.
So the the next the next item is um, endorsement of plans while meeting remotely. So who knows when we're going to be back in a room together meeting? And frankly, in the long term, this might be something the board sitter is authorizing a single person to sign A and R plans after the board has heard them and made their endorsement. Uh, and this could be the chair. Uh, it could be me, it could be the clerk, it could be whomever the board chooses. The reason everyone signs the A and R plans now is every year, you folks sign that nice fancy paper that I send back to the registry, and we always check needs a majority of the board, so we need at least three signatures. That could easily be put to someone else. Uh, and and they could be required to sign or permitted to sign A and R plans, I've worked in communities where only the chair is required to sign them. And that just kind of by process makes things a little bit easier. And in this instance, with not being physically in the same location, it saves you all from having to come to the office or uh, meet a schedule of time to drive around to each of your homes to sign these plans.
I don't I don't have a problem designating um, the chair or the director to sign plans following a vote.
I'd be opposed to it, I just recall the situation we had with Arrow Estates where the plan wasn't accurate, and it was only one of us that tripped over it.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
And that and that's fine, again, it's one of the, it's one of those things, well, and and you know, this for me is specifically about A and R plans. Subdivision plans, the the statute requires the board to sign them. And you do many more A and R plans. But that's, and again, this would only be after the board has has voted on it.
No. Well, I mean, I'm I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to get back to normal business, and the way we do it when we're meeting normally, it doesn't add much.
Okay. And again, that's fine, I just I brought it up and and you know, this all has you know, this was also what a month ago that this was originally discussed, so uh, I'll be reaching out to everybody tomorrow to schedule a time when you can swing through the office to sign the stack of plans that we have for you to to sign.
Have you done signed, Adam?
What's that?
How quickly do you need them signed?
I mean.
Is next week early enough?
Oh, that's fine, yeah, that's fine, I mean, I I think folks just have to recognize that you know, A and R plans and all the time limits are are extended and and you know.
Okay.
They're gone, so uh, it it's not, it's not a legal issue, it's more of a customer service issue at this point. Outdoor dining. Uh, so with the opening of phase two today, uh, restaurants are permitted to install or serve on outdoor dining patios. We have precisely zero open restaurants in Ludenburg that have existing outdoor dining uh, since Simon Pior closed.
Uh, Bad Larry's?
Oh, I apologize, one, there's one uh, who has existing outdoor dining. I have been approached by two separate uh, restaurateurs who would like to create makeshift patios to temporarily serve to meet the the requirements of of the the governor's orders. I spoke with the building commissioner, and his feeling was that there should be some, i- if they're using parking spaces, the planning board should be involved in some sort of temporary permitting for these outdoor dining spaces. And my feeling is that the board could issue something that is like a temporary modification to the site plan approval through the end of October, uh, when people really will not want to be sitting outside too much longer. Uh, and in theory, we may be at indoor dining at that point, uh, if not sooner, and this would allow our small businesses to uh, continue to operate and make money. But it's going to be limited seating capacity, so having the board look at it would allow you to balance how you feel their parking would fit with their proposal for tables and whatever else they plan to try and do outside. That that's my my. That that's my my thought to to the board. Uh, if the board doesn't have concerns because it's temporary and wants to permit people to do this. Um, I I think we can, we can work with that as well.
Might I make a suggestion? Um, it is definitely going to be reduced capacity. So if we just make kind of a a rough statement that. If you're working at. Half capacity that you can use half of your parking spaces. If you're you working at a quarter capacity, you can use three quarters of your parking spaces. Does, I mean, aside from maneuverability.
Well, that would, that would be the the concern.
It is a temporary thing and, well, yeah, it is.
A- and you know, I I, again, I I leave it to the board. I I really do see both sides of it. Uh, I don't think a restaurateur is going to. Purposely lay out something that is. Difficult or dangerous. Um, but. You know, eh eh, the times being what they are, I can see someone rushing to get something done after having struggled for months and months and. Uh, making a mistake that that maybe somebody looking at it objectively would have have caught.
Yeah, I see both sides too. What do you guys think?
I mean, I'm in favor of anything that helps small business owners get back on their feet. As a small business owner myself, I can't imagine what it feels like to have a law passed that your business went away overnight. Um, you know, and I know they've adapted the best they could under the circumstances. Um, I agree that some sort of percentage, I think, makes sense. And I would. Prefer to see a way that business owners can do this without our approval. I appreciate the sentiment, but at the same time, in the interest of timeliness. I think it would be better if they could work directly with the building commissioner and sort it out and get it done.
That's fine. I was. Unwilling to put that forward as a, hey, you guys don't need to look at this, um. But I I. I think that working at fifty percent capacity, allowing someone to use fifty percent of the parking lot makes reasonable sense. Uh, and and being able to divide that way would would make it simple math for most people.
And I would agree with that approach. I think anything we can do to assist the small businesses right now, and quite frankly, the citizens of Lunenburg, I mean, I think. All of us need some sort of outlet for, you know, safe socializing, and I think that allowing some of the businesses. To open, um, you know, with some safety protocols in place, I'm all in favor of that, so.
And I will work with the building inspector to come up with, uh. A plan to get these folks up and running.
Now, is is there Board of Health approval required for outdoors dining at this point?
I don't believe so. Well, I I shouldn't say I don't believe so. There are requirements for what. Restaurants are required to do to maintain a dining room outdoors. Uh, and I believe that the approval would be on the COVID response side as opposed to the restaurant operation side. Because from a restaurant operation, their cooking is still happening in the kitchen, which is generally what Board of Health is permitting. Um, their their dining room stuff is is a much smaller and. Uh, lower issue, so I I think that really any Board of Health permitting is going to be in ensuring that there's, um, safe. Safety precautions in place for diners and and employees.
Yeah, no, I I I I echo Tanner's comment about, um, anything we can do to get them back in business. Um, but I also, the maneuverability in a parking lot is is not necessarily. Intuitive. Um, it it could be very easy for somebody to block off a turnoff or turnout or. Just any maneuverability that that made it safe, whereas if that was eliminated or blocked, then it wouldn't be less than safe. Um, and I guess my concern was i- if they already had to get approval from Board of Health, they they meet twice a week, I mean, twice a month, don't they?
Uh, yes, they do.
So, yeah, I mean, eh, again, I think we should try to get this done as little meeting time requirement as possible, at least in the short term.
Okay, a- and I think that what we're gonna find is that by winter, um. Things will have shifted significantly and we'll be looking at at something different. Eh, not necessarily businesses as it was in February or or January of this year, but there'll certainly be more. More things happening and there'll be more response to to moving. The economy in a different direction.
Oh, the, uh, embers, I think, on, don't they have outdoor seating as well? They have the dock?
Oh, they they, well, they have that small patio.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I I I looked at the plan that, um, that Il Forno submitted and. That that it it made sense. It didn't. A thirty by sixty tent, it didn't. I didn't, I don't know how big their tables were, but I think it's gonna be hard. They they said something about ten feet separation, but then you're gonna have servers going in between. And, you know, my personal concern is is not an an issue here. It's, um, the Board of Health regulations.
Correct.
So, I mean. Yeah, I mean, we've we've opened up the farmer's market, uh, we've had two markets already and. Everybody has been very pleasant, followed the rules. There has not been a single problem, so eh, when when it comes to public. People going into public spaces for public events. I have nothing but positive experience in this situation.
Okay. That sounds good to me. I I'm all for getting them them up and rolling and and moving forward.
Um, should, um, well, one more comment. Do we want to do it a one-to-one? Like, if they're reducing. By fifty percent, they can reduce by fifty percent their parking or and if they reduce by twenty-five. If they reduce to twenty-five, they can reduce by seventy-five, or do we want to have? Something different. I mean, almost everybody, when they get approved, they have more seating than is required. So there should be a buffer already there. Does anybody have any input on that?
I think doing it by the same percentage makes the most sense.
Okay, yep, makes the math easy.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that sounds good.
Are you looking for a motion or just input?
Uh, no, motion would be great.
I would like to take one.
Tanner, I'm gonna leave that one to you.
What are we looking to motion? Uh. I guess I'll make a motion that we. Authorize the land use director to cooperate with the building commissioner and set guidelines for the safe. Establishment of outdoor eating.
Okay, uh, does that gonna suffice for you?
Sounds perfect.
Do you want any of the one-to-one parking reduction staff?
No, because I I I I I've taken the discussion in and I understand what you're you're looking for, so. Rather than trying to word that out, I think, uh, Tanner made the appropriate motion.
Excellent. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And I for myself.
And it looks like the last, uh. Thing on my director's items is the endorsement of the site plan for thirteen twenty-five. Uh, and that's really just a in informative note that the changes. To the BERM and other items, uh, from the final meeting were fi- were made on the site plans that are in the office. Uh, so they should reflect what the final decision was on the stormwater permit. Um, and the site plan approval for thirteen twenty-five Mass Ave.
Okay, do they need any further signature?
That they're gonna need signature. They haven't been signed yet.
Okay. Well.
When I schedule a time for you to come in and do the A and Rs, you can sign those at the same time.
Sounds good to me. I'm I'm flexible. I'm there every Sunday and I'm working from home, so.
Okay. It's all I've got.
All right.
Oh, and town meeting is Saturday.
I will not be in attendance. I'm gonna be away.
Hopefully somewhere good.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the Blue Ridge Mountains in Virginia, so, yeah.
Socially distant.
Doing lots of hiking and lots of biking and can't wait.
Excellent. Well, I hope you enjoy that.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'll be enjoying town hall meeting. All right, so our, uh, all board meetings are held at Town Hall, six thirty, unless otherwise indicated on normal. Normal outside twenty twenty. Whatever. Our next video conference will be June eighth. Do we have anything for?
Next, no, today's June eighth.
Oh, uh, I'm reading last month's agenda, so. Go on, our next meeting is not today. It's the twenty-second. Do we have, uh, something on that?
Uh, I think right now all we have is a common driveway and the, um. Follow-up for the one ninety electric stormwater permit.
All right. Twenty-two and then July. All right, and then we'll have one in July. We'll have two in July, probably, right?
Probably.
Excellent. Is there any public left?
Nope.
Okay, so I guess there's no public comment. Uh, bar, board comment or concerns?
Um, I have a quick one.
Sure.
Um. I'm a little bit concerned about our lack of progress on the master plan. Um, and I know, Adam, you were able to get pricing on the. Population study, uh, which I found to be very reasonable. It's my understanding that the town manager has put a halt to that spending. And I find that a little bit contradictory considering we're spending. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to engineer TCP. And we won't spend seven thousand dollars on the master plan. So.
Well, not only that, it it was approved by capital planning. It was in the budget. I don't know how she can not let us spend it.
I don't know. And the thing that really concerns me is I know. There needs to be discretion and she. Needs the ability to navigate through a very difficult situation when it comes to COVID nineteen and the budget and. Cuts to local aid and all of that, but. The engineering we're doing at TCP. Produces. No product. Unless town meeting votes to borrow the money to move the project forward. All we end up with is a set of plans. Which you can't do anything with. At least with the population study. You could make informed decisions about how many teachers to hire, school staffing, public safety, police, fire, I mean. You could take that information all over the place and I. I don't know. It doesn't sit well with me. Um, and. I don't know that as a board we have much we can do about it, but. Um, yeah, I feel like she's. Promoting her agenda, moving a project forward that she wants to see completed and has. Stonewalled us in the process. Yeah. Let's not forget, she's the reason that six of our marijuana articles got shut down. She's. Now shot us down on the master plan. Um, I don't know. I'm just not a big fan of it, so. There's my piece.
I I would agree with the concerns on the master plan. I mean, this is, eh, the plan needs to be updated. We need to have the tools ready to. Move this town forward. The town is continuing to grow and the master plan is horribly outdated. Um, we talked about the population projections and that needs to happen. Um, you know, we can't plan without a plan. Um, so I, you know, I would echo Tanner's concern about not moving forward with something that was voted and budgeted. Um, and and I think we need to move forward and I think we need to make that appeal, whether it be to the town manager, to the Board of Selectmen, to the finance committee. I I don't know what avenue we need to speak with, but but I would agree that we need to move this project forward.
Well, when when we got the quotes, uh, I approached the town manager about about doing it and that was shortly after the COVID. Explosion. Uh, now that we are back into the swing of. Phase two reopening, uh, I will inquire again. Uh, about. Signing that contract, uh, or getting the contract with the Donahue Institute. Uh, and see if that spending freeze has loosened or changed, uh, and I will, uh, let you all know when I hear back on that.
Excellent. Excellent. I appreciate that. Um, I was not aware of that. I would like to say, though, that I do think that the town manager has been doing a spectacular job, keeping everybody. Informed and, um. I'm sure tying up all kinds of loose ends. Um, I. I. I'm reluctant to say there's any kind of conspiracy against planning board, uh, how however unfortunate it may seem that way. It it is, it there's just unfortunate circumstances everywhere. Um. I I would have a comment as well, um. Seeing that, um, Mrs. Luck is stepping down from the selectman, not running again, um, she is the Stormwater Task Force appointment from the Board of Selectmen. And also the Chair of the Stormwater Task Force as well. I am. Up for reelection and may not win, so I am the third member there, so. If. Well, they'll they'll reappoint somebody from the Board of Selectmen, most likely.
I would expect.
Right. Um, anyways, uh, I would encourage, uh, anybody that is so strongly, um. Uh. So such a strong watchdog for the stormwater, uh, to, um. Take some interest in that group. Paula.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good, very good.
Speaking of the election. I saw a copy of the ballot. That only shows one.
One.
On planning board?
I saw one that had three. There's there's, there are three of them, but they're separate. They're separated because of the different years of term.
Okay, but there's a five-year, a four-year and a one-year.
Yep.
But Marissa's seat. Is that available to go on the ballot?
She would have had to, she would have had to have been elected anyway because.
She would have been, yeah.
Internal appointment.
Correct. She, her seat would have been on the ballot anyway.
Okay, all right. All right. So we've got three seats up.
Correct.
Essentially.
Yep, and I was not gonna take out papers. Um, so are there any further board comments or concerns? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoop, second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor, Ms. 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 Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
I for myself. Thank you very much for, uh, partaking in our. Little, uh. Web stuff.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.